Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for October 17, 2017. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Fire of the United States of America. And to Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you very much. Item number three, special presentation, RAR donation of the Fire Department. And Chief, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We're here tonight to accept some tools, some extrication equipment from RAR Malting. They graciously donated $10,000 worth of equipment to us. We got a cutter, spreader, and a ram tonight. RAR is here. On behalf of the Fire Department and myself, I'd like to thank RAR for their continued support of the Fire Department and their generous donation. With that, I would like to invite Jesse to come up if he'd like to say anything.
Representatives of RAR. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Again, when we at RAR look at entities that we would like to at least be able to help in some way to further their goals of getting equipment that might not be available through the normal budgeting process, we couldn't think of anybody better to do that with than the Shakopee Fire Department. You know, I always say we're intimately tied together because of the nature of our business, but we've had a relationship that goes back to 1935, I believe. So it's been incredible. And it's one that I'm extremely proud of. So, well deserved.
Well, thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Whiting?
Just on behalf of the City Council and the city, to RAR, thank you very much. We appreciate that generous gift. As you mentioned, you've been in the city for, since early 30s, you know, and sign says 40s, but we know, 1840s, but we know better than that. But a constant partner with things like the Fire Department and the city, so thank you.
Counselor Luce?
I'd just like to thank the people from RAR and RAR itself, the owners, that we've had a great relationship between the city and RAR, and I hope it keeps going. And thank you.
On behalf of a thankful community, thank you very much. These donations are very important to our Fire Department, and your continued support is forever thankful. Counselor Lehman?
I was gonna ask, and maybe we could show to the public what exactly you picked up, what kind of new toys you got.
The new toys. I got a couple.
Volunteer.
Right on cue.
Guys with some muscle will be up here.
We were gonna use your bumper of your car, I thought.
Go ahead.
So the first one here is a spreader. So it'll open up to 30 inches wide. So if we had to lift, you know, a chunk of concrete, or spread apart a door, or a car, or something like that, that's what we'd use this for.
This is a six-foot ram. It doesn't look six-foot at this, at this level, however, it's telescoping. So sections come out, and we can put this in a doorway, and spread that doorway at six feet apart to be able to get someone out of, not only a vehicle, but a building as well.
And this is the cutter?
It does exactly what it says. It will cut, and it will cut through car parts, car windows, car doors, and get us where we need to go with it.
This one's got a higher than 34,900 pounds of force.
Wow.
That one there, I think that one's similar around 100,000 pounds of force.
Counselor Whiting?
For the new tools, it doesn't, the new mowers and stuff, even in RAR's building, they don't such cut, they snap. So you have a high-speed, other than 10,000 PSI, it's faster, it's more than cut, and it's working now.
Counselor Whiting?
So this kind of equipment's been around for a while, but this is brand-new stuff. Is there gonna be some added training? Or gonna cut up some cars with it? Or how are we gonna practice with this?
Yeah. There'll be some added training. We have cars sitting at our fire station right now that we cut on quite often. We are waiting on the pump that goes with these tools yet. Should be here in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll start training on them and get them put on our new trucks that are coming right after the first year.
These are air-operated?
These are hydraulic.
Hydraulic operated. And a hydraulic pump is 10,000 PSI, or does that make the...
10,000 PSI.
Yeah.
Okay, and what we currently have is operated on?
5,000 PSI.
5,000, so bigger.
We gotta make sure not to mix the two, right?
Their couplers are different. We can't.
One coupler that's a little quicker to connect, the other one had two. Took a little bit more time to change out tool.
Hope you never have to use them.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks to RAR.
Thank you. Thank you, RAR. And there's a blue Ford Explorer out in the parking lot that you guys can practice on.
Could we get a quick picture?
Yeah.
Would that be okay if we get a quick picture with you guys?
Thanks.
So if the malt line breaks down, we become a three.
Gotta get Rick in the picture.
All right, you guys gotta get close. All right, everyone on three. One, two, three. Try one more. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm big, but I'm not that fat.
Thank you very much. Let's move ahead. Item number four, approval agenda. Are there any changes, subtractions, additions? Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, the only change is we have a revised pending garbage assessment list, which is on 8A. It is on the table. As you are aware, people have paid since the agenda was released.
Okay. So noted. Then other changes?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay. Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
There you go. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead, item number five, consent business. Are there any subtractions, additions? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Thank you. Counselor, oh, Counselor Lehman?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Counselor Luce, second. I have a motion and a second on the table. No discussion then. And before we vote on the consent agenda, we will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for October 17th of 2017. 5A1 approves the purchase of IT equipment through Logis for new servers, storage, and network devices in an amount not to exceed $257,000. 5A2 approves the minutes of the October 3rd, 2017 meeting. 5B1 accepts review of a conditional use permit and mineral extraction and land rehabilitation permits for Shakopee gravel. 5B2 approves rezoning of property from agricultural preservation zone to urban residential zone. 5C1 adopts ordinance number 972, which amends City Code Chapter 54, Water Resources Management, and adopts resolution number 7933, which amends City Code Chapter 150, Design Criteria Subdivision Regulations. 5C2 adopts resolution number 7939, which declares costs to be assessed, orders preparation of assessments, and sets public hearing for November 21st, 2017, for the Street Reconstruction Project Number 2017 TAC 1. 5C3 adopts resolution number 7942, which accepts bids, awards a contract to RL Larson Excavating Incorporated, and approves a 5% project contingency for Veerling Drive Utility Extension Phase 1, Project Number 2017 TAC 10. 5C4 approves amendment to an agreement with WSB and Associates Incorporated for professional services for the Veerling Drive Extension Project from Taylor Street to County Road 69. 5C5 adopts resolution number 7946, which authorizes execution of a cooperative construction agreement and limited use permit with Mendot for County Highway 15 improvements at TH 169 as part of the Windermere Development. 5C6 adopts resolution number 7937, which supports an application to the 2017 Local Road Improvement Program Grant for Adams Street, Marystown Road, and TH 169 Roundabout, and adopts resolution number 7938, which supports application to the 2017 Local Road Improvement Program Grant for Veerling Drive between CSAH 69 and Taylor Street.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion on the table and a second. Consent agenda's been read into the record. There would be no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda's been passed. Item number six, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and make a talk on an issue not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. On an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move forward then to item number seven. There were no items removed. 8A Assessment Hearing for Delinquent Garbage and Refuge Bills from Republic Services. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Counselor Member Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Counselor Mokel?
Second.
Second. The public hearing is open, and staff will present. We'll hear from Darren. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. As you stated before today, it's a public hearing for our delinquent garbage and refuse services for the year 2017. This is an annual assessment for properties that have unpaid refuse and recycling services from the city from our designated garbage hauler, Republic Services. In previous years' action, the council has authorized the collection of delinquent garbage accounts in the city's designated organized collection area. This action has eliminated the need to stop service to accounts, which can lead to higher incidence of illegal dumping and such like that. Ordinance number 583 obligates the property owner to pay charges and costs for collection of disposable refuse and recyclable materials. So that's in our city code that they're responsible for that service on an organized collection basis. Republic Services provide the city with a list of delinquent accounts to the city on September 20, 2017. That list included about 230 accounts totaling just over $36,000. I should note, in my memo, there was a little bit of misinformation in there. I stated that at the same time last year, about October 11th, 2016, that the city actually had 197 accounts for just over $30,000. So it looked like we had a little bit, that we had a little bit lower amount compared to last year. Actually, that amount was incorrect. Those numbers were from September 20th. So when I compare September 20th, 2016 to September 20th, 2017, are actually our property number, our delinquent accounts are up a little bit by a few thousand dollars. So, but as I go through the slide presentation here a little bit, you'll see that they really come in line, they're almost identical to where we're at this time last year again as well, too. So that's my fault on the error and the misinformation there.
Thank you.
As of October 11th, that amount has come down from that $30,000 or that $32,000 down to about $24,600. And that was last week, basically, when the memo was prepared and the agenda packet was prepared. I have included, as Administrator Reynolds mentioned, there is an updated delinquency list on your table tonight. That has now come down from $24,000 last week down to $20,000 as of basically this morning. We got an updated list this afternoon from Republic, and I know I had a couple customers email me tonight now and even said that they had paid their bills. So the actual account that would be certified, we will take into account any payments received tonight, because they can pay online or over the phone with Republic Services. So we will get an updated list from Republic in the next day or two with that kind of final amount that would be assessed. And so once the delinquent assessments are adopted by the council, an additional administrative charge of $50 will be added to each account. This is an admin charge that is split between Republic and the city to cover costs associated with assessing these delinquent accounts and the additional time and effort that Republic has incurred to try to collect these accounts as well. And as I mentioned, a final delinquent list will be generated later this week to make sure that we count for any payments that come in basically today and overnight. So after the assessment role is adopted, residents will have a 30-day interest-free window. That doesn't mean that that $50 charge goes away. The $50 charge is basically as of tonight. So after the council adopts the certification role, that goes into play. But there is an interest-free timeframe for this next 30 days. You're not required to pay the year's worth of interest if you pay the delinquent account within the next 30 days. And we will, we'll be sending out courtesy letters as well to all the final, once we get that final list, we'll send out courtesy letters later this week. Was probably the plan on that, or early first thing next week on that end of it. So with that, staff recommends certifying the assessments for the delinquent refuse bills.
Thank you, Darren. Questions of staff? Question of staffs? Counselor Lehman?
I got a couple questions. The first one is, the memo outlines the two separate $25 charges clearly, but the resolution does not. So I'm assuming the resolution is splitting it up also, like the memo describes. 25 city administrative and 25 republic administrative?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, it should state, right, it should state a total of $50. I don't have the resolution right here in front of me, but it should be a total of 50. It's 25, that is the city part, and 25, that is Republic, so.
It just wasn't clear in the resolution. Otherwise, it would be, it would be an additional 25 on the city's side besides the 50 that it talks about being paid to Republic in the resolution, which would be a total of 75. But I, I'm reading the memo, it's saying it's 25 and 25.
Yeah, and I wonder if that, I bet that's an oversight on my part. I think we reduced that last year, because I think our ordinance, the way our city code stipulates is that it's, I thought we charged a little bit higher amount for the city collection in the previous years, and actually our city code limits it to $25 on the city side. But it should state $25 for each with a total of 50, so. Apologize for the...
And then a follow-up question, Mayor. The other question I had was the first roughly 10 on the list that was on the table tonight. The first five are $5. I mean, there's not a bill from the service for that amount. So is that a pass-through type? I don't know what it is, but I just, I'm having a hard time understanding how somebody would be delinquent $5.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, they could have paid their bill short potentially, or it could have been a move-in, move-out, or they moved out and they got a partial credit, and then there wasn't a complete shore-up of the outstanding bill on that end of it, so. And that's, this time of year, we get a lot of calls. Obviously, when we send these letters out, we get calls from new homeowners that have moved into properties that had a delinquent garbage bill in the past. We've been trying to educate our title companies in town as well, too, but obviously sometimes you get title companies from out of town. But that new homeowners really should, if there is a delinquent garbage bill, we've been telling them to go back to their title companies, because it's really the title company's responsibility to do that title search and look for those delinquent bills that may be out there. And this is one that stays with the property. So their title insurance should really be paying for it if there's a new homeowner and they have a delinquent garbage bill from a previous owner.
And why these $5 ones? There are several that are north of 200 or 300 and even a little higher. I mean, I think at our household, even with the yard waste, I think it's $57 and $58 for a quarter. So that represents many, many quarters of billings, but Counselor Mokel?
I was just going to point out that it doesn't stipulate that the $50 fee is gonna be spread, split up, but it does say that it will be added to the delinquent amount if the delinquent amount is not paid to Republic. It doesn't say the $50 is going to Republic. Just a clarification.
Yeah, didn't really say at all.
And then a courtesy letter, but other letters have gone out in the past as well for delinquent accounts standard procedure of Republic, correct?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, the Republic Services does do their own follow-up, and that's a required part of our contract, is they need to do required follow-ups to try and get collection and not just rely on the city to do that, so.
Counselor Luce?
Republic is very diligent. They send them out monthly. They do their part.
Okay. Other comments of staff? Counselor Luce?
How many people did we overcharge last year? Because I believe we were charging $60 last year. And that would have been a $30 charge on the city, which you say is only supposed to be limited to 25.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Luce, I think last year we made that correction right at the, at the time of certification last year, that we changed it for last year. So I don't know about previous years prior to that, but I'm pretty certain that last year we reduced it as well, too, but...
If you would, please go back and check that, because I do believe I was charged a full amount.
Okay. It will do, it will...
A full amount of $50?
60.
60? And when did you pay your bill? That night or the next day?
Next day.
I remember that discussion. So, any other questions of staff? If not, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and talk about this issue in regard to delinquent refuge bills? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hello. It's my first time, so I'm a little confused. Sorry, and I have a language barrier, so sorry for my mistakes. Yeah, and you told about the new owners who called you and said that I've got a bill from previous owners of my property. And I did contact my company for closing, and they said that at the moment of closing, there was no bills. So I'm a little bit frustrated. I have $77.15 bill, $77.15 bill. And what should I do? My previous owner, like previous owners of our property, they had a lot of garbage, like full driveway. And I've been talking to them and asked, "Who will pay for this?" And they said, "We will." And I even called Republic Service before I transferred this property under our names, like me and my husband, and I asked, "How does it work?" And they said, "We will bill them." So, and a year after I got the bill, so what should I do? It's my first time, it's our first house, so I have no experience in that, so I came for advice. What should I do?
Mr. Lehman? Counselor Lehman?
To prevent the $50 additional administrative charge, you can pay the $77.15 today or tomorrow, I would imagine.
Today. Today. To avoid the...
They could pay it today?
Yep.
So the only way to pay this bill and that's it?
Pardon me?
So the only way out of this situation is to pay this bill for those people, for that people?
The $77.15.
Yes.
Yep.
So I have to pay for them. They left at that time.
So, and what, what, I don't know, to whom I ask this question? What did you do to make those people pay? Did you send bills or what? How does it work?
That's a good question.
Yep. Darren?
And if you did, how many times or what?
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Republic Service, the garbage company, will send out, they'll send out past due notices. It'll try to make calls, emails, whatever type of communication they have on that end of it. Ultimately, the way our system is set up here at the city is that the garbage stays with the property owner. And unfortunately, you probably closed, it sounds like a while ago, probably a year ago.
No, July 15th, 2016, year ago.
July 15th of 2016. And so they send us, at the time in September, any accounts that are 90 days past due. So that's almost at the very farthest point of time, is a July 15th timeframe. That wouldn't, it maybe wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been past due at that point, but it's, right, I don't know what you're gonna do there, other than putting pressure on your title company, that it wasn't, that the bills weren't prorated appropriately. Obviously, closing, just like your taxes are prorated based on the number of months of the year, or when you close it exactly. That garbage bill should have been one of those that said, you know, we gotta make sure that that one gets cleaned up at that point in time, too. So fortunately, at this point, there isn't probably a whole lot we can do other than if you talk with your title company, put some more pressure on them to go back, but...
Got it.
Before you leave, if there are no further questions, can you again state your name and address for the public record, please?
Yeah, my name is Helena Comer. And my address is 2341 Pansway in Shakopee. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment in regard to this agenda item? Seeing none, Counselor Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Discussion? Discussion? Counselor Luce?
Yeah, the five that have a $5 charge, I can't allow that to go. I'll pay it. I'm not gonna let five people get nailed 50 bucks. That's ridiculous. So I just saw it's on the record. I'll pay Darren tonight.
Okay.
So...
And then when we come back with those, the certified assessment, then those would not be on there? Okay. Other comments, questions? Discussion? Counselor Luce?
Wouldn't that still, or Counselor Whiting, I apologize? Wouldn't that still have the $50 service fee on it?
No.
If they pay tonight? Okay.
They could, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, they can still go online tonight and pay, and those would show up as paid tomorrow. Wouldn't have the fee attached.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution.
Let's close the public hearing first.
I thought we closed it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were talking about it. Motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 7944, certifying the assessments for delinquent refuse bills with the certification that comes from Republic in the next couple days. Also noting, the first five are $5. Will be paid by Counselor Luce tonight.
Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Discussion? Discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Two things I'd like. One is clarify that in the resolution, the 50 is split up 25 and 25 between the city and Republic Services. The other thing I guess I would, I'd like to say is, you know, Counselor Luce is correct, $50 on five seems ridiculous. However, as we learned from the lady at the podium tonight, if we were to change this and go to an individual name with the service, I think it would, the administrative side of it would be extremely heavy.
You would, you would follow the person as he goes, and then you'd get a new customer under name here, and...
But in order to do that, the administrative cost would be substantially higher. That's my feeling.
I agree.
So I don't know the, the answer to it, other than maybe a open system or something where, but, you know, we tried that, too, and we knew what that got us, when people didn't pay their bills and they got their services stopped, and they were dumping it around town, so.
Counselor Lewis?
The only way we'd have any chance with that is if they stayed in Shakopee. Once they leave Shakopee or Republic's domain, we lose them.
Well, I know that this has been going on for a lot of years in Shakopee, and this is unfortunately, an exercise of, you know, I think of betterment, pay your bill, you get assessed. You know, I do remember this number was substantially higher ten years ago plus, I think it was close to, I don't know, eighty, eighty thousand dollars, so I think there, there's been more awareness and more, you know, the, the dollar amount at least is less, and I think that's been an improvement. From this, but I believe every city does this. Further discussion, Counselor Lewis?
Well, we just went through it with all the delinquent water bills and garbage bills, a couple of meetings ago, where we wiped out how many thousand dollars, because they were small numbers and it just wasn't worth chasing.
Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving ahead to eight B, assessment hearing for delinquent false alarms and mowing service, and I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing, Counselor Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
And I have a second by Counselor Lewis, the public hearing is now open, staff will present. Darren, good to see you.
Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, this is the, the public hearing for the false alarm and mowing services. As you can see in your agenda packet, there are only two properties on this list this year. Whoops, sorry. And so with that, we've, since this time, we've had actually one of those properties pay, and so we're down to actually just one property left, and that is a property, it's, and the amount is for five hundred and twenty dollars. And it actually is for a false alarm fee, not a mowing service, as a memo stipulates on that end of it. So again, so we're down to just that one property. Again, that'll be charged, I have a twenty-five dollar administrative charge, just like the, the delinquent garbage bills as well. They'll have that, here, there isn't the additional twenty-five dollars going to Republic, obviously, on that end of it, so it's just the city side of it. They'll have that thirty day interest free window as well, too, to pay without any interest for the upcoming year before it gets assessed to their property taxes as well. And here, again, it's assessed at an interest rate of five percent, just like the garbage, garbage bills as well, too, and we will be sending out a courtesy letter as well, too, to the property owner after tonight, if it's, if it's certified by the council, so. So with that, staff are commens, certifying that assessment for the delinquent false alarm fee.
Thank you, and again, for clarification, it's only one fee on here, administrative twenty-five dollars. There's no other partner, the city is the.
Correct.
Counselor Lewis?
What is the charge per false alarm?
It's a hundred and thirty dollars.
So they've had multiple false alarms?
They've had four of them at a hundred and thirty dollars, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Whiting?
Is there a, are you aware of a grace period? I know Chief Coleman's not here, but do we give them two false alarms or?
And these are actually, I think, from the police department, false alarms, but I, I believe there is, Chief Tate can maybe speak to that, but I believe there is a one or two.
Because this, this list seems kind of light compared to what you'd see for fire alarms and.
But as Counselor Lewis just mentioned, this eight hundred dollars, I think the fee is one thirty or something, you said?
Yep.
So it's a multiple, you know, public safety is important, but if, you know, whenever you're rushing to something, and unfortunately, if it turns out to be a false alarm, then it takes his resources away from possibly a real situation. Counselor Lewis?
Well, and if you've got that many that you're getting, you're getting eight hundred dollar bill, you've got problems with your system. You need to have that fixed.
Counselor Lehman?
To clarify, it's the five hundred and twenty is the alarm, the eight hundred has been paid.
Okay. Well, I wrote it down wrong. I apologize.
Nonetheless, it's still four.
Right. Any other questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and make comment on this? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jordan Olson, two, four, nine, Mount Street. I'm just a little curious about this false alarm thing. Could you please describe what is, I assume you're talking about police phone calls? What is, what constitutes a false alarm?
Mr. Nelson?
I, that's a good question. From the, from the police reports that we get, is that it appears that they were calls to a home alarm system that were found to be that it was accidental trip of the alarm, or something to that nature, that the homeowner forgot to turn the alarm off, or something to that nature is usually the case on that end of it.
Okay, and the, what you're passing tonight is, is there some sort of definition as to what that is and what you're going to be voting on?
There is.
I just have the agenda in front of me.
I would assume the city code has.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a, there's a city code on it, you know, false alarm, your, your commercial structure is allowed so many calls per year, false alarms without any charge at all. What happens in a residential is you're, you're allowed a certain number of false alarms after that point. It's really incumbent upon the property owner to fix the malfunction and not make that malfunction the responsibility financially of everybody else. That, that's the intent of the, the code. And so.
Counselor Lewis?
It's like the mayor said, you know, that, you know, when you go to a false alarm, you're, you're going lights and sirens, and you got another call that's not a false alarm, which one do you pick? You don't know.
Right.
They have to pick one, go to it, if it's false, they missed another one.
I can understand that, I mean, surely, I, I just watched an ambulance drive by me on my walk down here tonight, so I mean, I, I get that. How many is that again, and you get three?
Four.
Four, okay, excuse me.
It's four on here that are delinquent. Are you asking how many they're allowed per year before they get?
Before you find them. I'm just, I'm just curious.
I think it's two or three.
It's two, yeah, I'd have to look it up. Okay, well, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this agenda item? Seeing none? Counselor Lewis?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion. Second, Counselor Whiting, a second to close the public hearing, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, public hearing is now closed. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt resolution seven, nine, four, five, certifying assessments for delinquent false alarms and mowing services. Second.
I have a motion, a second, then we'll see the certified list back, right?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, you will not.
One was paid, right?
One was paid, yeah, so we'll only certify to the county the ones that are unpaid.
Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. Eight C, vacation of certain drainage and utility easements for Maple Trail Estates, Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing. Second.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Lewis, and staff will present. Michael, good to see you, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council, this is Vacation of Certain Drainage and Utility Easements in Maple Trail Estates, first and second additions. They received final plat approval of Maple Trail Estates' fourth addition, revisions to the easements are necessary because of the revised lot lines and stormwater requirements. So they're basically asking to vacate unnecessary utility and drainage easements, so, excuse me. This is the plat, and so some of these are no longer required. When they replatted it, they fixed it, however, these need to be taken away, so that's where we're at. Pretty straightforward, Mayor and Council.
The orange is a easement area?
The top diagram is the original drainage and utility easements, the bottom is the final plat, so they created new lots and put the new road through, so we're getting rid of some of the existing drainage and utility easements that were corrected through the new road and the replating.
Okay, questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Safe to assume there's new drainage easements in the new plat?
Mayor and Council, that's correct, the new plat covered all of that, we just need to give it over the old ones.
Where we give up some, we're gaining.
Yes.
The others in the, in the plat. Other questions of staff?
So, Mayor and Council, the planning commission gave a positive recommendation, so the revised easements will comply with the design criteria for stormwater requirements are a part of the Maple Trail Estates' fourth addition.
Okay, other questions of staff? If not, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a comment in regard to their application? If you have a comment? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Evening, Mayor and councilpeople, I'm Cal Haskins, business address is four thirteen Cheston Street, Chaska, Minnesota. I don't have anything to add or comment, I think Mr. just did a good job of explaining it.
Question of the applicant, or their representative? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Haskins. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to make comment in regard to this application? Seeing none, Counselor Mokel?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. Discussion, 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 all in favors, I apologize, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr. Haskins for putting more property on the list to be built on in Shakopee. I think that area needed to be developed, it's kind of a hole in the system there, so. You're going to fulfill everything, or fill it in.
Thank you very much. A motion to close the public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion, the public hearing is now closed. Counselor Lehman?
Offer resolution seventy-nine, forty-eight, resolution vacating certain drainage and utility easements in Maple Trail Estates' first and second addition.
Second.
I have a motion, a second on the table, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Moving ahead then to nine A, one, advertised for proposals for City Hall and Riverfront site, and Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and Council, this is a RFP for the downtown sites. These are the two sites that we would be putting out. One is the former City Hall location, the other is a site along the river currently, where there's a vacant lot in the rear. Doggie Doo's and a vacant house. Across the street from homes, this is actually the view from the vacant lot on the river, so it's one of the few sites we have, where you could build something that would have a pretty good view corridor to the Minnesota River. So we propose that the applicant would need to submit a number of items, including which site or sites they're proposing on, and their experience, their track record, qualifications, and a project timetable. We're proposing that they be scored basically on what they submit, so twenty-five points for their qualifications, fifty points for their experience, and forty-five points for their financial capacity. The timetable would be, we would have an optional site tour on October twenty-sixth at ten o'clock. Proposals would be due on January fifth of two thousand eighteen at four o'clock. There would be a review of the RFP returns and the scoring from January eighth to the twelfth. Interviews, if necessary, depending on how many applications we get, from January twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, and then a presentation to the council and the EDA February sixth of a recommendation, introduction of those developers for questions.
Okay. Questions of staff, Counselor Lewis?
That view that you showed of the river, just a suggestion, you may want to get an aerial view of, say, sixth floor of what people can see. I think they see a whole lot more, and it would be a beautiful view.
Councilmember, Mayor and Council, it's a good point. You can see from the fourth or fifth floor of the building here, you can see across the entire flood plain. It's pretty spectacular.
I have a question, Michael, in the RFP, we're bound by, we're not bound to accept any of them, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, it's actually in the RFP that council can choose to pick nobody out.
Other questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor and, they're not paged, the selection process in the packet of information, I guess it doesn't have a page number on it, but it's, let's see here. Figure out how many pages in I am. Back of page four. Selection process. The way I'm understanding this is it's saying, after reviewing all proposals, city staff may select up to five firms and conduct interviews with each, each of the firms or teams. Following the interview, staff may ask for additional information from firms, conduct follow-up interviews. Propusers and their teams will be ranked in order of preference. Staff will then draft a memorandum of understanding for a period of six months with the selected proposal, or proposer, and forward a recommendation to the city council for approval of that selected proposer. I guess I, I disagree with that process, and the reason I disagree with it is, in my mind, you know, if I go back into documents and I'm looking at the criteria, the twenty-five points on qualifications, fifty points on experience, forty-five points on financial capacity, I agree with that portion of it. And to me, it would seem like we would hypothetically, let's say we have ten proposals, and staff goes through and sees, and ranks them on these three criteria, and let's say five of them don't meet one of them criterias, and they're dropped out. Then I, I would think that we would take the five that are qualified and have the council take a look at them, and what they're proposing, maybe let the public take a look at it and see, get some feedback from our constituents and what they would like to see of the five proposals. And then council would then tell, give staff direction on what we, as a body, want you to pursue, instead of the opposite way around of staff telling us what we're going to pursue. So that, that's where I disagree with this process.
Okay, good comment. Other questions of staff? I guess I look at the selection process as, as the experts at staff, culling out the, the best developers via the qualifications, financial, and experience to get to the. Chosen proposal, proposal per company, and then get an exclusive memorandum for six months, and during that six months, then, we would see that company's proposals, and we're not certainly bound at any level. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I guess maybe you're missing my point. I actually agree with staff going through the qualifications, experience, and financial capacity portion for all of the proposals. I don't have any, any problem with that. We have the expertise for them to do that. My, my point is, again, back to my hypothetical, you have five proposer, proposers that are qualified in all the areas with different projects. If only one of them is brought forward, and that's determined by staff, how are we in the public then to say, gee, we're getting this, we could have had this or this? We're not comparing what we're really, what our options are. It's not a public process, it's not transparent, and we're not allowed to then get the feedback from the constituents that we serve. They, they just aren't allowed to have any input into proposals.
Michael?
Mayor and Council, I mean, I think that we could bring back the top scoring ones, but I think the issue is, if you get ten, and let's say, seven of them score fifty points, it's really not worth discussing, and the others scored ninety or a hundred, a hundred and twenty. I think we, what we would do is, that's why we recommended here, presentation of the council, recommendation, introduction, introduction of the developers, so if we have three, then that's when you get to choose. I've done this a lot before, and you sometimes have a tie, and it's really up to the council to make a decision, if they're close, on which one you want.
Counselor Lewis?
I, I would like to see, you know, a percentage of them at least, you know, like you say, the, the top three, you know, if we get ten, at least a third of them, three or four, if we get fifteen, I'd like to see five of them. But, you know, a little more variety on our end, I believe, would be.
Mayor and, Mayor and Council, we're going to pick the top five firms, so if they're all pretty close, we'd be happy to, after they get through the interviews, I mean, you often get really good proposals, then we get to the interviews, you find out more information, and we'll bring that forward to you also.
Mr. Reynolds?
Michael Cudders.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Lehman?
You know, and when I was reading this, my first reading over the weekend, you know, I was thinking, I was, what I was honestly thinking about is, let's say we had three good but different proposals, and the council really likes this one, but it, that one takes more incentive, incentivizing. What's the public think? And if the public really supports that concept or that proposal, and it costs more to the taxpayers, well, you know, that's okay, because that's what they are telling us they want. But if we don't have a process that gives them the opportunity to tell us that, that's where I'm concerned, okay? Or maybe we just see three proposals, and instantly, everybody just goes right to, we really like this one, and we don't even look at the cost or anything else, you know? But I think, I think that option needs to be there.
Mayor and Council, what I've done in the past is we posted the top scoring ones online and let public have some input.
We could do that.
But I think it's gonna be hard to get down to the nuts and bolts numbers-wise, 'cause you can't expect someone to spend $50,000 or $100,000 at this stage.
Right.
Preparing a plan.
Dial it down.
We're gonna have, we're gonna know they have the financing capability, they have the equity capability, they've done similar projects in the past, and here is their list of wishes or whatever, here's what they offered. And we'll probably have some concept of what they're proposing. I mean, I don't think we're gonna be at a stage where you're gonna get wonderful renderings and floor plans and stuff, 'cause I don't think people are gonna spend that kind of money.
Counselor Lehman?
No, but I think the concept that, just a concept that, at that point, for the public to weigh in on is very important. I mean, it does create a transparent and public process, and I think it should be a public process, especially if there's a potential for public dollars to be used on it.
We can figure out a way to do that.
We've got another, Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I don't wanna beat it to death, but, you know, the land beyond that you're overlooking is a gem in this town. I mean, you know, we need to sell that. And I would suggest that we get a hold of, it's the federal DNR or the state DNR that has control over it, and try and get a list of the species that are out there. I know there's four nesting pairs of swans, and those attract people like crazy. There's a number of other species out there that, you know, some developer might be able to play off of.
Enough direction?
Yes, sir.
Are we, do we need a recommendation then to advertise?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Counselor Moco?
Make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the RFP and solicitation of proposals for the attached draft requests for proposals.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Discussion, Counselor Lehman?
Does our input that we just gave on the proposal specifically to my concerns, is that included? Is there consensus on council to that, or exactly how are we?
My call?
Mayor and Council, we'll include your desire. I think that, we'll have to see how many we get, but I think we will have more than one or two that we'll bring to you. If we have five that are qualified, we'll bring them to you. And we'll also post them on the web and allow people to have input.
So essentially, we'll qualify them and then move forward with your input into the process.
Counselor Luce?
I don't know how we would do this, but I just would like to get our ducks in a row, since we lost out on one project here on these properties, as to what we would be willing as a council to provide. I don't know, I'm sure we can't go into a closed-door hearing for that, but...
Like any other project, once we have a project actually on the table, that's when we would have those discussions.
And Mayor and Council, based on what Councilmember Lehman said, they have to give us kind of their wish list, and you're gonna see that. And if you really are in love with one project, and it requires a TIF and a million-dollar subsidy, then you can make that decision, 'cause that's a wonderful project.
Gotta have something in front of us. Follow-up, Ms. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I just, just a suggestion that, so that we can keep it legal, Mr. Reynolds might want to poll each council member to see what they would be willing to offer if, you know, we know what the wish list generally carries.
When we have a project, we'll bring it forward, and we will have that information from council at that time.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, here's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, you know, once you go through this process and you get, let's say you got five that actually pass all the criteria, and they're different proposals, them five come forward, we kind of get a, just a generic concept look of what they're proposing. And then once we, as a body, decide, you know, we really kind of like this one as our top one, that one is probably our second one, don't really like these other two or something, then we're gonna get down into the nuts and bolts of what it's gonna really take to make that happen. You know, yeah, do they have the wherewithal to do it 100% by themselves? Possibly. Are they asking in the process of signing up for proposals as it documents in the form, are they asking for something upfront? We'll know that right upfront.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we all know there's gonna be other little hiccups in a redevelopment of an area that has unknowns. It's not like it's a blank field where it's a little bit easier than...
Well, burial mounds, right?
Well, right. But, so I think, you know, I totally understand where Counselor Luce is coming from. I agree. I think that's part of the problem with the CPM process, but I'd like to avoid that in this process. And if we don't know what's being negotiated on our behalf, that's a, to me, that's a problem with the process.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, just so we're clear, and I think I read it in here, that the alley vacation is gonna be included, so they're aware of that, and then a possible road vacation on Levy Drive, I believe it is, in front of the property, it would move them closer to the river.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. The alley, along with the utilities, will be removed by the utilities. The alley, the street vacation will occur based on whatever their design looks like.
Right.
And we also put in, they have to give us a list of kind of what their wants and needs are. So, be able to have kind of a preliminary test if they're asking for the sun, the moon, and the stars, and a few planets.
Okay. Everybody all on the same page? We're all good? There is a motion on the table and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 9A1, 225 Somerville Street South Sanitary Sewer Project. And Steve will present. Welcome.
Mayor and councilmembers, good evening. My pleasure. The first time I get to present to you guys.
Without the crutches.
Thank you. I gotta get on the first page here. Apologies. So, the item that I'll be speaking with you tonight is pertaining to the 225 Somerville Street South Sanitary Sewer Project. This is a unique project. First off, a little background, there are approximately 720 septic systems in Chakapie right now. Most of those septic systems are in the south part of town, in the east part of town, in the newer parts that are not necessarily newer, but underdeveloped or undeveloped. There's a few scattered within the main part of the city, and there's also some unknown. I can't claim to, claim to know where all the septic systems are in the city. The county manages and inspects these private systems. If they fail, the county requires them to replace them or hook them up to city sewer if available. And this is the category at hand for 225 Somerville Street South. This was an unknown septic system. The city and county did not know it was there, and it failed. This is a single-family property. It has a house on the property. It has a garage on the, an outbuilding for a garage. This property is connected to the water system currently. The city, before I got here, has done an exhaustive search to verify if it was indeed connected or not connected to the city sewer, and we could not find any evidence that it was connected, so we are assuming that it is indeed on a septic system. It's not always easy to tell sometimes. We've televised, we've actually excavated around the system, and we may, we may even take a few additional measures to reconfirm a few things before we go forward with this project. We're not certain how or why. Service was not provided to this property. All the parcels around this property indeed have sewer and water to them. So, the investigation has led us to discover that the septic system in the holding tank is on the property, and it's actually underneath the garage. So, another unique scenario. And as I indicated, the county is requiring this property to connect to the city sanitary sewer system. In general, this lot is not adequate for a new septic system. They do, the county does not allow holding tanks necessarily, only in a certain few unique circumstances. For example, a seasonal home like a cabin, or on a very short-term temporary basis. So, their option is to connect to city sewer. So, in general, the city has an established municipal urban service area, MUSA for short. This area is generally established for the purpose of identifying the systematic development of utilities within this area, resulting in a more economical system for the public as well as protection of the environment. The goal is to provide full utility service to these properties within this MUSA area. On the map, you see there, it's a little difficult to see, but that's the city of Chakapie, and the blue area is the actual MUSA area. So, it's our goal at this time to have sanitary sewer provided to all the properties within that area. Another component that we work with Chakapie Public Utilities is with the wellhead protection plan. One of the goals of removing a lot of these properties off a septic system and onto a city system is the protection of our groundwater, our drinking water. It's very important. So, 225 Somerville has long been within this, within the city's MUSA area. Most utility projects of this nature, to extend a utility service to the property, it's funded by the benefiting properties, most often by developers or by public improvement projects that are assessed to these benefiting properties. So, as I started off saying, there's 720 septic systems right now. I would expect in the future that there will be public improvement property, projects to connect all of these, all of these parcels up eventually to a city sewer system. There might be some caveats if they stay large lots and they can maintain a septic system, but I would expect in the future that eventually they're all connected. So, it's not always easy sometimes to do that, and this is, this is one case. So, per the city's wisdom in the past, the city has a special assessment policy, and they have an exception, and I want to read the exception because it's important. It doesn't necessarily define what to do once you find an exception, but that's, this is where we need to use our judgment. So, I want to read it. It says, "However, it is recognized that certain areas of the city have developed without all needed public improvements, and that methods must be found to provide these improvements without causing, without causing undue hardships on the general public or the individual property owner." So, that's, that really sets the stage for this property for 225 Somerville. So, our proposed plan is to extend a sanitary sewer, a public sanitary sewer line to this property. The city would develop plans and extend the sewer to the property line via the alley between Somerville, and now I forget the other S Street. Must be Spencer, if I'm gonna guess. So, from Spencer, running down the alley between Second and Third Avenue to this parcel, that is the most, the most, the better place to connect into the city sewer system right It should also be noted that this alley, it sounds like an easy project, well, let's just extend the sewer up the alley, no problem. Well, there's a gas line in the alley, there's fiber, there's communications in the alley, there's shallower bedrock in the alley. It's a difficult project. It's a small project for one property. It's a very difficult and expensive project. So, once the city would do this project of extending the sanitary up to the property line, then the private property owner would take over and connect up to that system. That's how that would work out. Sounds easy, but it's very costly. So, two parts to this project, the public project and the private project. So, first, I want to talk about the public project. We have get, we have received some general bids, not formal bids, but general estimates from a couple contractors of what it would cost. It's just shy of $50,000. We have about a $46,000 project. I'm hoping once we, if we get to the point to build this, that we can get a more economical project, but this is generally the worst case for the public part of the project. Funding that we have, that I am proposing, that we've developed, first off, the county does have a grant program where they can contribute $6,000 to this project, and possibly a little more. So, as I'm proposing, the property owner would be responsible for $15,000, and this is generally the approximate cost of a septic system to replace it. They vary substantially. You can get a $25,000 septic system. But, so this would be a set amount at $15,000 for the property owner. The county grant would be $6,000, hopefully plus, and then the city would make up the balance of it. So, at this point, it would be $25,000. If the bids came in at $30,000, the savings would be experienced on the city's end. It'd be fixed at $15,000 for the property owner, $6,000 grant, and now I can't do the math, I don't even remember what I said. If it was $30,000, $21,000, then it'd be $9,000 for the city.
So, Steve, if the, is the grant to the city, or is the grant to the homeowner?
The grant is actually to the homeowner.
So, like you said, if the bids come lower, it's in our favor, but if the grant is higher, it benefits the homeowners, is that correct?
That's how we could work it out, yes. But we are, as part of this, as part of this agreement that I'll be getting to, that grant would be turned over to the city to pay directly for these improvements, and not come off of the $15,000 fixed amount for the homeowner. Then we get to the private work and costs. So, when I say the private work and cost, they need to abandon the septic system, however that may be. It would be, have to be permitted and approved through the county. They'd probably have to fill it. Tough to remove, because as I indicated, it's underneath the garage, very unique. So, I'd abandon that, and then they'd have to disconnect it, and then connect up to our system, the public system that we stubbed up to the property line. That could cost as much as $3,000 to do that work. That's our very rough estimate. And then there are city connection fees. These connection fees pay for the city, the system-wide trunk sewer, as well as the city sewer access connection fees and the met council fees that are to be paid. So, all in all, the additional private cost would amount to about $6,500. So, the property owner total would, could be up to about $21,500 total for this project. So, it's not a cheap project. To do this, we recommend a cost share agreement. This agreement is mostly a, it's a, it's a developed agreement that the city has used in the past, and it's mostly for defining the special assessments for the project. It would define, again, the $15,000 fixed amount to be paid by the property owner for the public improvement part. It would include a waiver of special assessment hearing and a waiver of an appeal, or the right to an appeal, and it would meet the requirements of the state statute pertaining to the 429 assessment hearing process. And we also have a caveat in there that they, that the property owner would be required to hook up within three years of installation of the public improvement. So, that was a snapshot of the project. I certainly have more information if you're interested, but with that, I do recommend approval of Resolution 7947, which would, which is ordering an improvement and preparing plans and specifications for the 225 Somerville Street South Sanitary Sewer Extension, and also authorizing execution of an agreement for payment of special assessments. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thanks, Steve. Counselor Whiting?
In the past, we've had SAC credits that were available from RAR when they went off the system. And at one point in time, we discussed using a SAC credit in a situation where we had to use, you know, connect to the sewer system to get somebody off of a septic, and wondered if those are still available and if that would fit into our current policy.
Mr. Reynolds?
That was a discussion, Mr. Mayor and Counselor, but...
That was a discussion, Mr. Mayor and Counselor, but the policy was not changed to allow that at this point. I would recommend not doing that. I think that opens up a, a plethora of opportunities for those credits to be used for residential as opposed to economic development, which is what we currently have in our policy.
Mayor and council members, if, if I may also, you know, there's not an, I, I don't know the balance of those credits. But as I started out, there's seven hundred twenty properties out there that need to be connected plus future development. Where do you use those credits? My, my recommendation would, would, might be, might be on city projects to make them more marketable. But certainly there's not an endless supply of credits. So, where do you use them when, when you don't? That, that's ultimately your decision. But in this case, my, my recommendation is to have those included as part of the connection fees.
Counselor Layman?
And just if I may, when I said residential, single-family residential is what we were saying.
Follow-up?
Yeah, please. In my mind though, this is one that's been neglected. This is one that the city let slip through. To me, this is the perfect opportunity to take one of those SAC credits because this is a major hit to a, a property owner who should have been hooked up. The city should have caught this. And to me, this is, this is where we use this.
Counselor Layman, and then I'll come back to Counselor Mokel. Counselor Layman?
I was part of that discussion back in the days of Councilmember Clay. And it was Clay and I that recommended to use it for situations like this. And it went the other way on a three to two. But I'm gonna look at this from a little bit different perspective. We're talking about wellhead protection to where we're supposed to be protecting the groundwater. And then we, we talk about using SAC credits for new development, economic development. New development is hooking up to the system. They're, they're not provide, they're not a risk to, to the groundwater. And here we have a case that potentially is and we're not considering it. So, to me, that's backward. If we're truly, truly looking at protecting the, the drinking water, this is the opportunity, not new development and economic development. Not saying that you don't use it on economic development as an enticer, but if you're talking about protecting drinking water for the rest of the area, this is the case. So, I would absolutely agree with Counselor Whiting on a SAC credit for this type of property. I'm not, I agree with city administrator that you don't open it up to all residential. I mean, it has to be a pretty substantial case to be made. And I think this one has met that threshold.
Counselor Mokel?
I, I can ask, also agree with that. But I was also wondering, we didn't talk about a timeframe. You know, you put the, the, what you thought it might be, but how soon can we get this done? Because we're already talking about a sanitary that, that has failed. So, we're already there. We're already contaminating it. So, how long before that can get done?
Mayor and council members, it would be difficult to get that done this year. We were looking at next spring. It's possible this year. We might run into some temporary pavement on the road, some issues with the alley, but if, if all parties can agree and we get agreements signed, we can certainly vet it and see if we can get it done this year.
Counselor Lewis? What are they currently doing for septic? I mean, if it's failed, are they pumping it to stay ahead of it? Or, I mean, if the system failed, it's not going anywhere?
It's a good question. I don't know the specific answer, but a lot of times when a septic system fails, it doesn't necessarily mean it's totally plugged up and not usable. But I know the property owner, I think, is in the audience and he might be able to answer that better than I. But, but there was a plumbing, how did this happen? Is it got backed up, came into the city, got a plumbing permit? And I'm assuming something was fixed because it's still a habitable house. And I'm assuming people are still using water. So, maybe they need to pump it. But we can certainly ask a resident.
Steve, I have a question on the agreement that's outlined here on the recitals. Item number, I don't know, C-three, says the property shall have up to three years to connect to public utilities. And if we go to this great extent to, to solve this problem, we obviously would want immediate hookup. I mean, it wouldn't be given three years. It's immediate now. We're here solving this problem. You're gonna hook up, is that clear?
So, so Mayor and council members, right across the, the face of that agreement, it's draft. This is not in final form. That was from the template. Certainly, we could change that to a year. I do know the property owner would probably like this done sooner than later as well. So, that is something we could, we could change in that template agree, special assessment agreement to one year. Be it?
Counselor Layman?
I think we need to be just a little bit cautious because we actually have to get our side of the project done first. And that might not get done this year. So, it would be twelve months from the time that we have our side of the project done. Right?
Well, I'm just thinking if we do the pipe and, and then, okay, we're in the alley and we're all done bringing the sanitary sewer. Thanks a lot. I'll call you when I'm ready. I got three years to hook up. No, I'm gone. We brought the pipe. We're solving this problem. You need to hook up now. And we're all on the same page rather than, it says the property owner shall have up to three years to connect to the utilities. I understand that it might take some time, but at the minute the pipes are, let's solve the problem. Let's not let a, another delay go by where, you know, that's really, if the pipe is there and the landlord doesn't hook up for three years, doesn't really solve it. That's how I feel. And that's why I wanted to look at number three and if it's draft, that's fine. When, when the pipe is available to hook up, the prop, compel the property owner to hook up.
What kind of timeframe are you asking for?
I'm, it, I would just have language. When the pipe is available, homeowner hook up. All right?
Like a ninety-day window or?
If it's in the middle of winter, then what? So, I, I'm saying within twelve months after our pipe is, is there, within twelve months. Cause that gets you if-
Our part's done?
Should cover all the bases, yeah.
Other questions of staff? I know this has been worked on for a long time and studied and in the big picture, is it the, is the right end game? The procedures and policies about how to get here? But it looks like we're at least getting closer to a solution. So, I think in my mind, that's good. Counselor Lucio, question of staff?
That's gonna entail digging up part of Spencer Street, isn't it?
Spencer Street, yes, Mayor and council members.
Okay. So, I guess in my book, I wouldn't want to see that temporary for the winter. That'd be pretty detrimental. I mean, that, that's a major thoroughfare in town. So, I would say if we planned this for spring would be a lot, make a lot more sense.
All right. Great. Let's discuss those points. Further questions of staff? If not, thank you. The, is a resident here? Would they like to make comment? This isn't a public hearing, but please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
I, my name is Franklin Hawes and I live at two-two-five Somerville. This has been going on for a while and if there is some more credits out there that would be a godsend. I mean, this has blown a big hole in my retirement plans. I bought the house before the one-sixty-nine bridge was open. So, then it was built. And, you know, it was a good deal on my part. I picked the house with the septic tank, but there was no pipe coming out of the backyard. So, and the paperwork was inconclusive, you know, from the realtor. Some said private, some said city, but there's no pipe coming out of the backyard. I never had the thing pumped. There, it's ninety-nine percent sure that I have a septic tank, but as we said in the meeting, I've never had the thing pumped. And I just have a feeling there's one little part that needs to be dug and I think we can have that dug just to make sure it's one, you know, it's like this long in one particular spot, just to make sure. So, that's being discussed. If we can have one more little search. Is it still possible to have my taxes assessed to lower my cost? Or is that part of the agreement that that can't be done? Now, because my thing is I'm gonna sell and I don't know how taxes work other than paying them. I, is that tax passed on to the new owner then, the higher taxes?
Well, uh- Darren?
Mayor, council members, usually when we would assess this, so this is a project that's gonna get, we are gonna assess that, that fifteen thousand or the homeowner's share of that would go on to your, on to your taxes, but it's likely not gonna happen until pay two thousand nineteen. So, your tax statement in two thousand nineteen. So, it'll be a pending special assessment out there for a while. And with special assessments usually, at closing, we usually require, or we do require the, the payment of any outstanding special assessments at that time. So-
Right. I was gonna, with the profit from the house, I was gonna put that in escrow to pay for the work done.
Yeah. And that's, that's usually what the title company would do is, is put an escrow amount in there until the final assessment amount is determined.
So, there's, okay.
Or the buyer would pick that cost up as part of the negotiation in the price of the property.
Escrow, you are part of the negotiation, but either way, at the time of a sale, it gets resolved from the city aspect of it on the special assessment part of it.
So, this property will have a special assessment on it? And that's negotiated at sale then?
Well, uh- Counselor Layman?
Mayor, there's a couple ways. If you stayed in that house for the next twenty years, you will see, you'll have a special assessment, just like a road project in front of your house that stretched over ten years with an interest rate of five percent or something. And, and you pay it with your property taxes. If you're gonna sell the property and there's an assessment against the house or a pending assessment, the person buying the house is gonna say, gee, you want X amount of dollars for your house. There's twelve thousand dollars remaining on this assessment. If you lower the value of the house by twelve thousand dollars, I'll pay for the assessment.
Okay.
Or-
The seller.
Right. It's a negotiation between the buyer and seller. The other way it can happen is you're gonna end up paying the assessment off and selling the house at full value.
Right. I don't know which way, best way to go on that. I'll just have to get some advice and-
And that's strictly your prerogative, you know?
I, I guess that's all I have other than, since I'm selling the property, the three-year-long thing you were talking about isn't gonna happen. I want to get it done and sold and move to St. Paul. Well, with the, I'm moving in two weeks, three weeks. The house, the sale will go on beyond that. So, I'm not sure what I'm selling. But that's why I put the money in escrow. So, within a year or ten months, the project will be done. So-
What is the current status of your system?
Pardon?
What is the current status of your septic system?
Uh, there, they, they pumped it out. The contractor pumped it out, didn't need that much pumping. They put a access pipe. So, you can get at it and that's about it. And I haven't had it pumped since last, well, a year ago.
But it's working.
It's working.
It's working.
Yep. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, and to kind of address the SAC credit discussion, we're, we're essentially negotiating this and, and what I, what I would offer as opposed to operating differently than our current policy, we can certainly wrap up the two thousand four hundred eighty-five dollar fee that would be a normal SAC credit into what we currently have the property owner paying. So, in other words, he would get the credit, but wouldn't get the credit. And, and that way, we don't have that issue in the future that Mr. Lilyhog and I had discussed about the multiple other properties that are-
I, to comment on the SAC credit, I, you know, I remember when we had that discussion a year ago about, you know, are we gonna have any for residential in unique situations? But also several years ago, our city sent out some letters to hook up to municipal services and those are a clock on that. And unique circumstances or not, I think that, you know, careful on the precedents and, you know, I agree on the premise that this seems unique. But I wouldn't want four hundred or three hundred more residents that were on that list from several years ago because they're all gonna be unique, right? You have a policy and rather than, maybe, maybe we take what Mr. Reynolds said as an opportunity and then discuss that possible policy change or wording that we started discussing and, and bring that back rather than do it as a, a concept here and, and start something that maybe we haven't thought the more long-term aspects of it because those SAC credits are valuable, redevelopment, development, unique situations. But there, there certainly a set number of those and be careful. Counselor Whiting?
Let me see if we can wrap this up here. I will make a motion to approve Resolution seven-nine-four-seven ordering an improvement in preparing plans and specifications for two-two-five Somerville Street South sanitary sewer extension and authorize execution of an agreement for payment of a special assessment for the extension of lateral sanitary sewer to this property in the amount, in the fixed amount to the property owner of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
Further discussion? Or I have a motion on SAC by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? Counselor Layman?
I'm gonna reiterate, reiterate what I said earlier. When you talk about SAC credits for economic development to a project that has absolutely no possibility of contaminating our drinking water compared to a property that could potentially contaminate our drinking water, I'm gonna side on this, on the project that's got the potential to contaminate our drinking water every single time. I do think we need to have a look at our policy and I do think there are gonna be circumstances to where we should consider it. And if we didn't have excess SAC credits, well, then there's none to be given.
What would we be doing, right?
We wouldn't be doing it.
Right. Well, we would be hooking up this resident. And then it gets down to, he's gonna pay his SAC credit. It's kinda, and so, I agree with you, public safety is paramount. The reserve of these SAC credits and maybe we adjust our policy or look at it. But I, I do know that there are several hundred residents too. So, and they may not have, they may have failures which public water safety would be paramount as well. So, I think the, the way we're doing it is fine, but I think we should have the further discussion. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and that's certainly, those are valid points and we can certainly bring that policy back. I just don't want to operate outside the bounds of that policy without having those long-term discussions and ensuring that staff and council understands because I don't think we've really thought through those issues from the staff level. So-
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Layman?
Mayor, at one point in the past, we talked about where the groundwater was higher and where it was lower and where the susceptible areas of Shakopee are to where the groundwater contamination is more likely to occur compared to other areas where it's really unlikely. And, and there, there is a map there for that and that map would be part of that discussion.
Good idea.
All right. Good. Good discussion, solution? All, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Nine-B-two, Water Resource Environmental Engineer. And Steve will present again. Welcome back.
Mayor and council members, I don't have a presentation for this, but I did want to highlight a few points that were in my memo. So, tonight I'm asking your consideration of adding a Water Resources Environmental Engineer position. I have only been here a few months and I'm continuing to evaluate all of the public works, duties, workload, structures. Initially, I've identified some internal adjustments that I plan to implement in the long term. Nothing critical. But in the short term, I have identified an immediate need and recommendation that will streamline delivering certain work tasks, provide better customer service and result in- certain work tasks, provide better customer service, and result in substantial cost savings to the city pertaining to water resources. Um, currently, consultants are being used as a direct extension of city staff. Um, they basically perform relatively all the surface water, um, evaluation and engineering work for the city in lieu of having any city staff member perform this work. I'm not certain how long this has occurred, but it certainly, um, has occurred over the most recent few years. Uh, my best estimation is that it's, um, just under two hundred thousand dollars of general water resources work is being consulted out. Um, and it is my proposal to hire an internal staff member to perform much of the work that is being consulted out, not all of it, but a lot of it. And the following is a list of primary tasks that would be the responsibility of this position if you were to approve it. Um, the first item, and these are all, all very important items, and, um, there, there's a lot of them, it's not a matter of do, should we do them or not do them, it's a matter of we have to do them. Um, the first one, for example, is the MPC, MPCA permitting that we do on a city basis, so we can actually discharge our water into the Minnesota. Um, it's called the MS four MPDS permitting program requirements, they're pretty extensive. Um, and, and you just approved one tonight, which was actually updating our water resources ordinance. That's part of a requirement of that permit, we had to do that. Um, other tasks, development storm sewer and water resources review, city storm water improvement projects, storm drainage issues, there's a lot of storm drainage issues, miscellaneous storm drainage issues out there in the community. Um, we have, uh, three different jurisdictions as far as, uh, watersheds go. We have the Prior Lake Outlet Channel, we have the SMSC coordination, so a lot of different liaison duties, um, for the different, um, aspects of water resources. Um, the city has a local water management plan, it's part of our comp plan. We're actually required to have that updated, um, by, I think it's December of twenty eighteen, so we have to get going on that, that's, that will be part of our comp plan update. Um, but that doesn't fall under the scope of the comp plan update, so we have to hire a consultant to do that. Um, but there's, uh, as, as you see that Eric does with the comp plan, there's a lot of liaison duties and coordination duties, um, so that would be a primary duty. And then, once that plan is in place, we want this to be a working document, so it would carry on the livability of that document into, uh, annually into our capital improvement plan. Um, the city has a stormwater model, so for all of the water that falls in this community, it's modeled through the storm sewer all the way out to the Minnesota River. Um, a consultant has that model right now, I'm not proposing on changing that, but we don't do, city staff, we don't do anything with that model. We rely holistically on the consultant to manage that model for us. So my proposal would be to partially manage that and have a little expertise in-house on that model. Um, and then natural resources, uh, we recently, um, eliminated our natural resources technician position. Um, however, we still need to do all those tasks and, um, those initiatives that were being done by that person. So, um, those tasks represent a workload that easily equates to a full-time workload for, um, this position. Um, additionally, as indicated, um, those natural resource, um, tasks, we still have to do them, and partly, part of those tasks would be absorbed by, um, some other staff, but a majority of them would be handled by this new position. Um, there is enough work for this position where the city would indeed experience cost savings by hiring the staff member that would perform, uh, more of this work internally and a better balance of internal work versus consultant work. And again, this would result in streamlining the work and provide better customer service as a result of having the staff member within our office. So, with that, this background, in my opinion, um, justifies and substantiates the need for a Water Resources and Environmental Engineer position within the City of Shakopee Public Works Engineering Division, and I respectfully, respectfully recommend and ask your consideration. And with that, I stand for any questions, so thank you.
Questions of staff, Counselor Whiting?
Um, you talked about consultants using, you know, using consultants for, for your water management needs right now. Uh, at what percentage, uh, kind of a guesstimate, would you say your professional services budget goes to these kind of, uh, services?
Um, not an easy, not an easy question, so there's multiple professional services budgets. So, you have the storm water, surface water professional service budget, I would expect all of that does. Part of the engineering professional services budget does, as well as, and, and this is, this is probably a, an important part, is when we have a developer come to town and have a development process go through the city, we basically, um, we have engineering fees, but if we hire an outside consultant, we pass those fees directly on to the developer. So, for example, there is a, a simple development, um, oh, and I had a good example off the top of my head, now I can't think of it. A recent one, it's a childcare facility on the west side of town. It's a simple parcel. Um, we, we spent, the developer is having to reimburse two thousand dollars for that development review. That should have been a development review, could have been, I should say, a development review that could have been handled in-house with about two to three hours of work, you know? Contrary, um, we coordinated that work with some of our staff to, to get a quotation from a consultant, and then them review it, and it, it took two thousand dollars, and we pass that bill on to developers, so. When, when I gave the, gave the estimation of two hundred thousand dollars, um, that's a combination of professional services under the stormwater fee and other fees that we pass on to developers, um, et cetera.
So in other words, so we do charge developers fees, but we can't really pass through if we, the complete cost for the, well, we can on the professional services when we consult it out, but can we do that in-house when we do it?
If, if we were to do this in-house, um, we, we pass those fees on in our engineering fees.
Okay.
So we, we have a systematic engineering amount, which is a hefty amount based on project costs, et cetera, that, uh, the developer does pay for, and typically, that would cover a water resources review unless we have a consultant, unless we farm that out to a consultant, then the agreement is, is that, that the developer pays for them. So, so there, so that cost savings would be a developer cost savings, but it's a semi-warranted cost savings that is of interest.
You know, and I, and I apologize for, I didn't mean to catch you off-guard with asking some specific numbers or anything, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is, uh, the budget impact here, you have twenty percent from the natural resources and eighty percent from the stormwater, so the, the stormwater fund would actually pay for those, those, uh, professional services anyway, correct?
I didn't quite track your train of thought there, but, but the stormwater fund would pay, as proposed, pay for eighty percent of, of this position.
Of the position.
Um, and, and in this situation where we went farm-out work to a consultant, it would be covered on, under the stormwater fund.
Right.
So the professional services that you would need to use without this position would come under the stormwater fund anyway, okay?
But I would expect there to be a reduction of professional service fees.
Counselor Lewis?
I've got, uh, three or four questions. Uh, first one, you mentioned the, uh, stormwater topographical model. We would be getting a copy of that so that our people could use that?
Uh, Mayor and council members, that, that's a robust model. Um, there is a, just like any, um, software system out there, there is a, a read and write. We would have more of a, I would expect a read and, and not maybe a full write, um, access to it. It depends on the individual and what type of training that we can get for that system. It takes a lot of work to maintain that. Um, it, you know, it would probably take, if, if we were to maintain that system and keep it up to date, it would probably take twenty percent of our staff time versus, I don't remember what I have here. Um, it was maybe about five percent. So we, we would have the capability of it, but I'm, I'm looking more at a, a read level, so we can do simple reviews, look at the model, review it, pass on our comments.
We have a working model that we could, okay?
But we would still need assistant, assistance that I would expect from a, from a consultant to help maintain that and update it periodically.
Okay. Um, as far as, uh, one person taking over all these duties, would there be a second set of eyes in case? You know, it's always nice to have two sets of eyes, 'cause somebody's gonna miss something.
That's, that's why I'm here, I gotta, I'm the second set of eyes.
Okay, I'm just making sure on that.
Absolutely.
And then, um, we are gonna recoup some fees from the developers being that we have our own in-house staff.
Uh, Mayor and council members.
Charging them less?
They'll be charged less, but we will be charging them a fee for our professional services.
Our fee will basically stay the same.
Okay.
So I, I don't expect our fee to increase.
Right.
Our fee will, the engineering fee will generally stay the same. The savings would be on the developer's end of it, um, by simply streamlining it and, and being able to do some of that work in-house.
Okay, would we be looking at maybe increasing those fees to cover some of our costs?
It's a possibility, um, and, and that might be, uh, a good, um, I'd say, exercise, but more than an exercise, it's probably warranted for us to review our, our engineering fees, make sure that they're, that they are, um, correct, that we should, that they're being charged out at the appropriate rate, so that, that is something that we can look at in the future.
Particularly if we're gonna be saving them money in the long run. It's a win-win.
Thank Counselor Lehman?
My understanding would be if a project comes forward and our in-house folks can't handle it, let's say we had this position filled, and a project came forward and we couldn't handle it internally, which would be covered under their engineering fee, fees as part of their project, and we had to go to an outside, uh, consultant agency, that would be a mutually agreed-upon, uh, staff and development agreement, and then they would pick up the outside cost of that consultant. That would be kind of unique projects, I would guess, with unique water features. But back to your memo, um, it says WSB's billing is those, billings associated with general stormwater work amounts to well over a hundred thousand dollars for a seven-month period from January to July. Extrapolating for a full year, it equates to approximately a hundred and seventy thousand. So if we've got a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year worth of consulting fees, and this answers Counselor Whiting's question, um, then you subtract the wages of this position. How do we track the savings that you're talking about? Um, because we would have to see a difference from one year without the position to one year with the position, reduction of the consulting fees.
Well, let's go, I'll help out here.
Well.
We just passed a po, we just updated our policy here on consent, and I'm sure that we used a consultant to do that. And if this position was hired, that would be a, the, the position would be able to update our policy in-house. And yes, there's a cost to that, but it'd be significantly less than, than a consultant, uh, situation, and I see this as a direct savings.
Mayor, I really appreciate you making my point for me, because what you just said was, we're gonna save them consulting fees by doing it in-house, which is what I was asking.
Okay.
Okay, I'm asking specifically, in your memo, it says a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for consulting fees in stormwater management. How much are we expecting that to be reduced by this position, and how do we track that?
So, so Mayor and council members, um, I, I am not going to stand here and say that I know precisely what this is gonna save us, because I don't. Because the, the tasks I outlined, I outlined eight major tasks. Um, they're significant tasks that aren't all being done by a, by a consultant. For example, the watershed district liaison duties, I'm doing that, it's a significant amount of work. So, the cost savings there would be freeing up my time to do other better management things that I, I wish to spend my time with, so that's not a cost savings thing necessarily. Um, but my, my point with outlining, um, the hundred and seventy thousand dollars extrapolated is, is that we spend a significant amount, and I'm proposing that there's a good, good portion of that hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we can save by hiring an, an internal staff member, and I, and I'm not, I'm not standing here tonight to tell you what a number is, because I, I don't know, and I, but I could certainly go back and, and evaluate that and project that if, if, if that's what is needed, and I, and I would do that if needed.
Mr. Reynolds, and then Counselor Moke.
I was gonna answer it, but that's okay. I was just gonna say, that's what a job market analysis does, is from an HR perspective, is you have so many things that you have to put into the calculations before you can come up with that, and that's what part of the, um, right in our budget impact, it says it's going to have to do a job and market evaluation, 'cause there's not always a job that, um, fits all of the categories. And I think that's what we're talking, he's talking about, is he cannot commit to a number tonight, because it has to go through that process.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
And I'll, I'll say, uh, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Lehman, that, that very valid, uh, uh, points and things that I would be extremely concerned with overall if we were not a growing community. I think that we, we have growth yet in front of us for at least the foreseeable future with the work that, uh, frankly, you and, uh, Mayor Mars had done on, uh, our orderly annexation agreement. Um, and ultimately, in, in, in talking with, uh, Steve, uh, I'm very comfortable with the fact that it, saving money is important, but it's more than just the money-saving piece. It is delivering quality customer service, where essentially, we're not farming something out and then have to check in and see how it's going, uh, much like, you know, it's great to have your people here, so you can say, okay, this needs to be done tomorrow, and they're accountable to you. So, saving money is definitely important, and, and, uh, that is a big piece of this, but it also is that customer service piece as well. And, and we can, we can bring that information back to you.
A year later, I get it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Counselor Lehman?
My biggest point, and I'm not opposed to this in any way, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm fully aware of where we're going. I don't wanna see residential storm fees increased immediately because of this, because that would feel like now we have residential users, small, very small users, subsidizing eighty percent of the project work, and I just wanna make sure that doesn't happen, so.
Counselor Lewis?
Um, stepping off on Mr. Reynolds is, it's customer service, I mean, we're gonna speed things up. Our developers are, are getting irritated with the amount of time it takes for some of this stuff, I hear about it. I'm sure some of you hear about it, and, uh, that's gonna be a win-win for everybody.
Um, other questions of staff, if not? Steve, thank you very much for your presentation and your opportunity to save us some money, I believe. Counselor Whiting?
I have a motion to authorize a Water Resource Environmental Engineer within the Public Works Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. Um, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Lewis?
I, I guess.
I'm sorry. All those opposed? Before, I'm, what do you want, I'm sorry?
I was, I, the motion was to authorize the position, and before that can happen, we're, we're doing what Counselor Moke was, talking about a market analysis and putting together a job description and a, uh, pay grade and all this stuff, so we basically approved something, but we don't really have the rest of the pieces.
Yeah, that, that, that all will come before council as part of our process, yes, sir.
Alright, so we voted on it, and, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes. Um, next up, our monthly financial review, nine C one. Darren, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For tonight is our monthly financial review. Um, I put some detail into the council agenda item, but I'll just kinda go through some of the, those highlighted items, um, for the general fund, uh, for both our revenues and expenditures, and then touch base on the community center and ice arena, as we've been doing throughout the course of this year as well. Um, hopefully you can see that, I'm gonna scroll through here a little bit. Looking first at our revenues, um, we touched a lot about the, the taxes piece of that, obviously, that's twice a year. Uh, we'll be getting our second half tax payment here now in, in December, um, so a little ways out yet and such. Um, special assessments, that pretty much relates to like what we talked about earlier tonight, the garbage, uh, refuse, delinquent bills and such like that. We pay republic services for all their delinquent garbage bills, and so it ends up being a negative number, uh, for a while, until we get both half of our tax payments in, um, throughout the year. Uh, licenses and, licenses and permits, um, September was another strong month of, uh, a permit collection and license, or licenses and permits. Uh, we've actually exceeded our twenty seventeen budget by over a half a million dollars, um, three-quarters of the way through the year, um, so that's a substantial number on, on that end of it and such. So, we'll obviously be revising that budget upward, uh, when we get to do the, the budget part of this year and such like that, but, um, that's a part that's really been strong for the last, you know, since I've been here, it's been phenomenally strong. number of, of permits coming through the system, so. Intergovernmental revenue, if you recall last month, that was kind of lagging a little bit behind kind of the average where we were at, should have been at for the end of August. Now through September, when we're three-quarters of the way through the year, we're up at that a hundred percent range. And what happened in September is that we received our, both our police and fire state aid from the state of Minnesota. So that shorted up, that was kind of the last major state aid money that we'll be receiving. I think we have one small piece left to come in, in December, but just a, a very minor amount on that end of it. Charges for services, that's at an eighty-four percent level. That's again above that seventy-five percent threshold, or kind of that key amount that we're looking for at this point in time. There we have, that's where we get our, our SPUC, kind of the franchise fee or their share, that their payment coming into that, all your recreation, ice arena sales, recreation memberships, programming, those types of things. What else is in that? Contractual services for the police department, so all their private duty overtime that, that we do for a lot of the major events and, and activities and such. That gets charged into that line as well, too. And so there again, that amount is, is about ten percent higher than what we, what we'd anticipated at this point in time. The fines and forfeit, forfeits, that's kind of a smaller budget amount, but that's up about a hundred and fifty percent. And that's really due to some late fees associated with some of the lodging taxes, along with payments related to the driving diversion program that come in kind of haphazardly on that end of it. So not a big dollar amount. And then our miscellaneous revenue is also up a little bit, and that's due to our interest receipts coming in a little bit higher than anticipated as well, too. So even with the, the lower taxes amount, that's a major part of our revenues, we're still sitting at sixty-seven percent for our total revenues for the year. So buildings and per, building permits, charges for services, all those types of items are, are relating into a very positive year so far at this point. On the expenditure side of it, a little bit more mundane, everything's in that, kind of that, that ten percent target that we're looking at on, on either side of that seventy-five percent margin for the end of September. We have a couple of them are a little bit higher, finances a little bit higher. We have all paid basically all of our professional service fees for the year. So our assessing services, our audit services have been paid now, so those are basically done for the year. And so as the year progresses, those expenditures will fall back in line with the more of the target area. Engineering is only at about sixty percent, and that's due to some vacancies that we had early part of the year. And then street maintenance is up a little bit, a little bit higher, still within the, the range that we're looking at. But that's due to some of the timing of some of the seal coating and chip sealing projects, along with a trail project that had been done now in September as well, too. So as the year progresses there, that'll, that amount will fall back in line with the rest of the expenditures, or anticipated to fall back in line there, as long as we don't get any of the white stuff too heavily before the end of the year. So I won't say it, because Steve's looking at me, so. So that's basically where we're sitting at. So your total expenditures are sitting at seventy-four percent, right at the target where we're looking at for the, the, obviously, three-quarters of the way through the year and such like that. So at this point in time, your revenues are exceeding your expenditures by, you know, close to a million dollars at this point in time. So we will be having a very good, very good year granted any unforeseen circumstances at this point in time, so. Any questions on the, the general fund areas?
Some people refer to that as white gold.
Yes.
Other questions of staff on this?
Others, not so much, yes.
Councilor Lehman.
Darren, there's two red arrows on that whole sheet. You've explained one, which would be the special assessments.
Yep.
The taxes are, is a red arrow because we haven't collected second half yet, correct?
Right, so that percent used column just compares it to where the target should be as of September thirtieth. September thirtieth is the three-quarters of the way point of the year. That, where we're at is at fifty-three percent. We only receive taxes twice a year in late June and then early part of December. So we get kind of that spike where we were really low for the year, then we, we get that first half payment in, in June, and then it gets back up to where it should be. Now it falls back down till we get December timeframe.
So we're going to see that red arrow until second half taxes are actually collected.
You're going to see that red arrow until the end of December, until the final report is in place, so.
Just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
All right, continue.
Any more questions on the general fund before we move to the?
Which solid numbers.
Let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger here. So moving on to the community center and ice arena, we've been looking at the, both the revenues and the expenditures on this. And it's that, it's a year of transition, of really learning what we have and what we, we don't have. Revenue side of it on the ice arena, they're coming in just about double of what we were last year, which they should be. We have two sheets of ice now, so we would really expect those revenues to still be maintaining that kind of, that double capacity where we were at last year. Ice or, ice, or hockey season has kind of officially began, so the association's probably in full force right now, so we'll be getting those billings out. I'm sure they had some ice in September, and they'll have, they have a whole lot of ice in October, so we'll be seeing receipts coming in, kind of the normal in-season receipts in October and November here. And then on the expenditure side of it, the wages and benefits are, are holding where we were at. They're, they're pretty low, and we're seeing some need that, we didn't necessarily need all the, the part-time help is what we're finding, is in talking with ice arena managers, that with that full-time staff, we added a couple of full-time positions that really kind of was able to handle the operational load at that point in time. And obviously, you know, we only went through about a half of a full season last year. You know, that may tick up a little bit this year if there's additional tournaments or something of that nature and such. But I think we're expecting some savings in the wages and benefit area of that, which is good, because yeah, excuse me, the operating expenditures are, are increasing, obviously, at a higher rate than they were with just one sheet of ice. And one specific line item that we're looking at is obviously the electric and, and gas side of things and that, in that it's, it is coming in higher than what we anticipated. So we are making, making adjustments for that as well, too. Looking at the community center revenues, your year-to-date actual amount is about four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, compared to last year to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which last year we were under construction, it was probably a, a low year to begin with as well, too. But we've had some really good drives to pick up membership sales and programming, programming opportunities as well, too, so. And we are expecting that to continue throughout the end of the year. I know they're planning to have one last, another push before the end of the year here to get members to sign up before rates increase for twenty, twenty eighteen. The aquatic, the aquatic center came online in first part of July, so we are seeing some additional operating expenses there. I went back and we looked at the utilities there a little bit, and our electricity did jump in both July and August, time for those, those are the two months that we have bills for, and they about doubled. So we went from about nine thousand to eighteen thousand. And that's probably a combination of obviously the pool coming online, so you're, you're running more pumps, you're running heaters, that type of thing, but you're also, on the one hand, you're heating the pool, which is creating warmth in the, in the pool area, but you're also in the middle of the summer where you're trying to air-condition the building as well, too. So you've probably got a little bit of push-pull on, push-pull on that end of it. So I'm, I'm assuming that it's both due to weather and operational side of things as well, too. So we'll be able to see that more as we come into the fall season and less air conditioning and such. But we're watching those expenditures there as well, too. So all these expenditures we have, on the utility side of it, we are implementing, you know, higher amounts in our twenty-eighteen budgets. We are planning for that, so we're making adjustments on, kind of on the fly here as we, as we go, too, so. And with that, that's about all I have. If you have any more specific?
Questions of staff?
From the numbers guy, the numbers guy, he like to crunch numbers, don't you? So if I take the September year-to-date actuals and I add the top revenue and the bottom revenue together for roughly eight seventy, eight hundred and seventy thousand, and I take the wages, benefits, operating expenditures, top and bottom, and add them together, that gives me the expenses. So we're at eight seventy for revenue, one point two plus for expenses.
Right, so you're, and obviously, these things are subsidized on, on, to a certain point of it. But your net loss at this point is the hundred thousand dollars for the ice arena, and then two seventy-eight for the community center. And you can kind of compare that to last year, that it was, the ice arena was thirty-six thousand dollars, and it was three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the community center at that point in time. And here's our, our budget amounts. We budgeted the ice arena to about break even or lose about twenty thousand dollars, which to budget an ice arena to only lose twenty thousand dollars when we have the rents built into this? Most places, if you can get an ice arena to, to break even without including any capital, that's your goal.
Yep.
Our goal here, this includes the rents, is to basically break even for the most part, other than that twenty thousand dollars. So that, that's a phenomenal goal, and if we can stay where, at that point, we're doing probably the best in the state at, at that point in time, so. Because ice arenas, they have a lot of capital, and, and we're accounting for that capital in our budget. So it's, 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 we hope the projections are, are, stay where they're at, and they keep moving in the right direction, so.
And we're going to create further efficiencies, though, you know, the more, longer we're open, especially on the pool side and the community center, like you were talking about, the staffing aspect. Hockey right now has been open, you know, longer.
Or, yeah, not quite.
You know, and these are baseline numbers, and it's given us a great handle here. But I think actually, you know, get to the end of the year, get to next spring, and then we'll start tracking these numbers and then fine-tuning those numbers even more.
Right.
Right.
Right, it's been a great exercise to help us with the budget for twenty eighteen. I mean, really looking into each month's utilities bill, utility bills, and, and looking at the personnel costs and such like that to help really, you know, Jamie and I have spent a lot of, a lot of time trying to really project and try to get a little bit more accurate on where we're at for twenty eighteen, so. Help that process.
Other questions of staff? Questions of staff? Darren, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving ahead then to the ten A city bill list for our preview. And then ten B liaison reports, Councilor Lehman.
Mayor, I'm going to focus most of it on the one sixty-nine corridor coalition. Good meeting, good discussion. We had a presentation by SRF for a study being done on the one sixty-nine from Marshall Road, Min Pass, and bus rapid transit lanes. And the study that they brought forward, learned a few new things, too, but the study that came forward shows a, a potential inside lane added in both directions from Marshall Road up to four ninety-four. I guess there's space there to do it. The original bridges that are built over one sixty-nine are built to allow that inside lane to be added. And what I did learn is that when the river crossing bridge was built, that was specifically built to add two additional lanes on the center of the existing structure. Never knew that.
It's separated, so you're.
Right, but there's also space for the third lane on the existing deck. So that was reassuring, and it also allows for the bus rapid transit on the shoulder, to answer Councilor Whiting's question in that study, which surprised me. I didn't think it was wide enough either, but apparently they can be done. The, the Min Pass lane, which I'm kind of against Min Pass in general, because it's like an extra lane that only those that can afford it can use, is only, in the study, six hours each direction. The other eighteen hours are open to the general public, which is a huge plus for everybody that uses it. And that makes a little bit more sense than. The cost on the project, pretty expensive. And then they, they kind of went off on a separate project, off of that project, of what small improvements could be made with the biggest impact to get to that big, future bigger project. Some of them were actually really, really simple, and it's, it's like, if they're this simple, why hasn't somebody just done it at twelve o'clock at night with a paintbrush, right? But apparently it's governed, it takes a lot of, a lot of different avenues to get through the state than the feds and whoever else is involved on that one sixty-nine road. They did talk quite a bit about the bus rapid transit and what they're trying to accomplish there. And there's two models, one is up to Highway fifty-five, and the other one is up to three ninety-four, both leading into the cities. One had fifteen stops, and the other, I think, was twenty-two. But one's closer to a residential population to move them up on the corridor where the other one serves a lot of businesses. So you, you capture one or the other, not both. So I asked that that presentation be put onto one sixty-nine corridor coalition's website, so the general public can see it and have input into it and, and see where potentially things could go, because there's clearly, as this body has already displayed, a need for some crossing capacity, river crossing capacity. So we're working on it, progress is slow, money is tight, apparently. But good, good, solid study. I, I, I supported that study, I support the, the findings of that study. I think it's a good compromise, and I think it benefits everybody involved. So as soon as it's out, I'd encourage you guys to wa, watch that study.
Is it on now?
I haven't seen it yet. There's bits and pieces, but they said they would, they would try to at least put a link on to SRF's, and I'm sure they got to get permission from SRF to do that, so. Or staff could get a hold of them and get a copy of it or something. It was a pretty good slideshow.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I spoke and attended the municipal legislative commission, the MLC here a couple of weeks ago. Actually, the city of Shakopee was the host, so they got to tour city hall, which was kind of cool. Fourteen communities in that group. A lot of good discussion there on that. Met with the Shakopee Minnewakansoo community, and also then, as Mr. Reynolds put out in an email today, we did meet with the independent school district and the county and city staff to talk about school crossings and safe streets and trying to develop a game plan to move forward, which I think you'll see here gather steam and move ahead. Matter of fact, we're looking at the safe street study that I think will benefit our community.
Councilor?
I did not have any liaison reports. I do have one question for Mr. Lehman. Wasn't there a one sixty-nine forty-one update, or is staff have that open house, public meeting coming up?
Yes, they, they, they did have an update on it and kind of had a overview of the project, too, where the roads are and how they're going to stage it. That project is going to be staged over many years, it's going to start next year. And the first part of that project is to create the frontage roads farther down the lane and the overpasses to allow all the business accesses for when the main project happens. And I think that was in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty.
I think there's an open house in the next couple of weeks, and I encourage people, if you're interested, to look into that. The only other thing I wanted to mention, maybe not a liaison report, but other businesses, reminding folks that it's, it's fall, burning leaves is not, not legal in Shakopee, so. Let's not do that, and let's not rake those leaves into the gutter either, because that ends up in the river and doesn't help anybody, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mokel.
I had my SDA meeting on October fifth. They did hire a consultant as an interim executive director. I also had my SPUC meeting last night, and for electrical, they had three outages. One was rolling oaks due to construction for about thirty minutes. They also had a garbage truck hit a utility pole that affected a hundred and forty-four customers for twenty-six minutes. They did end up with a squirrel for four customers for thirty-five minutes. And then today, they, the linesmen were going to the Minnesota lineman rodeo out in Marshall, and they had six participants in that. And then on the water side, we got a, they did a video of the River View booster station where they were putting in the flooring and the piers and how they were going to make the capacity, and then, you know, showed it inside of the house, that'll be the actual building there. And so that was a pretty cool video to watch. They expect that they will be inside, the outside finished by November first and doing the inside, finishing the electrical. And so the other thing that I did want to bring to everybody's attention, too, is, as one of my duties on Luac, we are doing a conversation with, a joint meeting with the Water Supply Advisory Committee, talking about the regional, not only regional land use, but also the water supply planning. So that will be going on, and I'll, they have a few dates out there, so I don't have a date set. But I did ask for staff's input, so that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Now let's move forward then to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I attended Metro City's Board meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, I attended Metro City's board meeting on the evening of twelve October. As part of that, we approved our legislative priorities. Uh, one of, one of the reasons that, that I was really interested in, in this particular, uh, board was to have some impact there. Um, I, I will say that there were several substantial changes that I think that this council will be, uh, interested in. Uh, and, uh, as soon as those are fully available, I will get those out to everyone. Uh, we did have our envision Shakopee meeting, uh, uh, which was held on October twelfth at the community center. Uh, as you know, that's our, our comprehensive planning process. It's still continuing. Uh, they're starting to form some general subjects that people seem to be interested in. Uh, and these are just, just general theme, subject areas. But, uh, a need for strategic planning, decision-making and communication, growth and development, excuse me, growth and redevelopment, uh, strong and diverse economy, Shakopee's unique history and community identity, downtown revitalization, access to parks, trails and the river, transportation options and housing options. So, we're starting to see a, a lot of great input from the public and, and remind everyone that, uh, that is still available. Please go to the Envision Shakopee website, uh, where, uh, you can, uh, uh, make, make your particular, uh, thoughts known. Um, a, as the mayor said, the city, county and school district did meet on nine October, uh, to specifically talk about the issues of Seventeenth Avenue and the multiple crossings. Uh, during that meeting, uh, I, uh, basically volunteered the, the city staff to lead the effort on the safe routes to school. Uh, we're very fortunate. And then we have, uh, Eric, uh, who is, uh, uh, you know, our long-range planner and is also in charge of the comprehensive plan, but also has an incredible amount of experience in this particular area. So, uh, looking forward to getting all of us in the same room and, and starting that process, as the mayor stated. Uh, just for your long-term, actually, it's not that long. It's next month. Uh, several workshops currently we're looking at, uh, um, obviously, we have the budget workshop at some point. Uh, we also are looking to bring forward our tree, uh, preservation and landscaping ordinance review, uh, in a workshop setting to kind of get the feeling of council in regards to some of the, the, the issues that we're currently wrestling with. Uh, and then finally, uh, Canterbury Park would like to come forward and, and talk in depth about their plan and what they see for the future. So, uh, three workshops. I'm trying to judge where we're going to be in regards to our meeting size. And if I can push something on one meeting or the other, uh, would really like to have all of those, uh, put forward as part of a meeting. But, uh, please stay tuned for that. Uh, Nate, I and Jennifer will be having several meetings in the next couple of days to talk about our health insurance. As you know, our premiums increased almost thirty percent. Uh, we've got a host of, uh, uh, we've, first of all, we've, we've been talking with, with, with staff in regards to multiple different, uh, uh, concerns that they have. Uh, Nate has been working very hard with Jennifer to put together some options, and we're going to start, uh, discussing those generally with staff tomorrow. And then ultimately, uh, uh, or is it Thursday and Friday? Wednesday and Thursday? Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, and then, once we get an idea as to where we are with that, obviously, uh, we'll, uh, uh, come to council with those issues. Fire station held its open house on fourteen October. Uh, if you, if you have kids or grandkids and, and you don't take advantage of that, boy, I'm telling you. Uh, kids run around all over the place, uh, uh, crawling all over everything and eating cheese balls. So, uh, luckily, the, the rain held off until just about it was time to close it down. So, uh, just a great, great fun time by everybody. Kids doing everything from squirting, uh, the fire hoses to, uh, crawling all over the machinery. Uh, I'm very proud to announce once again, uh, I, I shouldn't say it like once again, but it is, seems to be an annual event here for the city. Uh, we've received the government finance officers association certificate for achievement and excellence in financial reporting. And hat goes off once again to probably, well, not probably, the best financial staff I've ever had the opportunity to work with, bar none. Uh, incredibly professional. Um, I've said this before, I come in with these harebrained ideas and basically say, I'd like to go in this direction. And then, uh, Darren and his staff get together and figure us how to take us there. Uh, just superb, superb effort all across the board, uh, with the finance department. And you will see that yet again as we go into that budget workshop. Uh, and finally, uh, both Nate and I will be at the ICMA conference in San Antonio, uh, from, I'll be there from the twenty-first to the twenty-sixth of October. Nate will be there from the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. Uh, we are always available by phone, email, everything else. Uh, and we will continue to be in touch with what's happening back here in the city. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman.
The legislative priorities that you, you talked about, wh- whose legislative priorities specifically are these? The, what was the name of that?
Metro Cities. The one that I sit on the board for.
And then we'll see these when they, when they're finalized?
They've been finalized from Metro Cities, and now they go out to, uh, the particular cities for their review and comment. Uh, and essentially what occurs is that there is a, 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 each area, uh, and there are five different areas, everything from transportation to housing to, uh, 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 other issues, which I can certainly send out tomorrow. I don't remember off the top of my head. But, uh, are reviewed by a committee of individuals that include both elected and appointed officials. Uh, and then as part of that process, uh, whether it's one meeting, three meetings, five meetings, uh, each one of those legislative priorities are reviewed and then ultimately voted on by that subgroup. It is then brought, uh, actually in two cases, uh, they actually had a sub-subgroup. Uh, but then it's brought, uh, forward after passing out of those committees, it's brought forward to the Metro Cities Board, uh, which I, uh, sit on at this point. And, and that was what we voted on and discussed, uh, at the last board meeting.
So there's a, a, a number of Metro Cities legislative priorities out there representing us, and we haven't seen them, correct?
They haven't been adopted yet.
They haven't, they've been adopted by the board, but they have not been approved by member cities.
You usually hate them.
What's that?
You usually hate them.
Well, I'd like to know what they are if they're representing me.
Well, and that's the process, that they'll come before here.
Okay.
You'll have the opportunity. I remember last year, you and Counselor Luce both put your written objections to them, and then I forwarded them on to Metro Cities.
Well, most of my objections were to the League of Minnesota Cities proposals, not necessarily.
This is Metro Cities.
We'll be given an, uh, opportunity. All right.
But, but I will say that, um, I, 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 you know, not everyone is going to agree with everything that's on those legislative proposals. But I was rather impressed with some of the uh, changes that frankly, uh, from my perspective, which actually mirrors some of your concerns, Counselor Lehman, in a large, large respect. Uh, and, and, and there has been some movement over the year, last year and a half or so in some of those areas, so.
Fiscal disparities, governance.
And we continue to work on fiscal disparities, yes.
All right. Um, thank you. I apologize if we, uh, did not mention a scale meeting. The fifty-by-thirty presented a dashboard in the last week's, uh, discussion was workforce readiness as one of their pillars. Uh, fascinating, good information. I only have one of these, but I'll leave it here and I'll get, uh, we'll have more of those available. November seventeenth at scale, they will have the state's demographic, uh, demographer making a presentation, as well as the urban, uh, land institute. We'll do a, a, a section on, uh, land urban planning, which, uh, uh, I think is going to be some great information to hear from both those, uh, agencies on November seventeenth at Prior League City Hall. Counselor Member Luce?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to November seventh, twenty seventeen at seven P M.
I have a motion. And a second by Counselor Whiting. Before we vote, we want to have everybody have a happy and safe Halloween. Further dis-
I think you said the date wrong. Mr. Mayor, I think the date was wrong, if that matters.
November seventh?
To November seventh.
November seventh, correct.
Who seconded the motion?
I'll adjust mine to November seventh.
Is that what the, is that what it was?
Motion maker?
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay. A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned. Motion passes. Thank you.